Other questions on the report?
I went down this morning to the roundabouts, I don't know if everybody's got a chance to walk down there.
It's only good though.
Well, Detective Superintendent, probably good. So, all of the curbs in, I think it looks, it looks nice, it looks tight in a couple spots to me, but I think it's, it's beautiful. Everybody has, they got all the curbs in, they got the two islands in, they have dirt in the islands. They're talking asphalt Wednesday.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, they've got, I don't think they've got half of the sidewalks in yet, but they're gonna do the base and the wearing course of asphalt, weather permitting Wednesday, and then they're gonna continue with that. So, I think we're pretty close to schedule. A couple weeks ago, we thought they were reworking on it, but they're working on it. I mean, they've got a good group down there, and they've had a lot, a lot of utilities to deal with.
They're working on the weekend?
There is some.
Exactly.
The school asked last, uh, last weekend, working Sunday, put that, was out behind the high school, put the fence post.
They're probably being on the Roundabout Project Baker Road, because probably, we haven't gotten the final date yet, but this should be known probably next week. Our, yeah, our Baker Road project, which is tied to the Roundabout Project.
Speaking of that, the school started hauling dirt last week. A lot of dirt they're gonna have to move. Um, the last I heard, I thought Patrick was Saturday, next Saturday, somewhere in there, they're gonna be done, I mean, weather permitting. Hopefully a little sooner, we just heard that today. Um, it's a lot of dirt, and I don't know if you know where they're hauling it to, they're hauling it down to Creekside, the old high school, and putting it where the old football field used to be, and they're raising that up.
Oh, really? All of that dirt?
All of that dirt. Pretty much letting you. So, I've been trying to work with the county to let them go through the roundabout, but when they had their curbs and everything in, they didn't.
No.
No, that's what they said, absolutely no, but we tried.
Cut through the cemetery.
Well, or, yeah, there was other options, but they chose to go down Baker Road, down Baker. On Dan Hoy Road, they're, today, they're working on filling behind the curbs, backfilling all that, um, digging a few swales and trying to get the rate elevations on that. They were at the one entrance to the garden, digging that out, they're gonna put asphalt back in there. Steve Brower's site, I don't know if you noticed, but he had to pull out another 250 feet of curb down there. Um, one of the, one of the big issues that we're running into is trying to lay curb against an existing road that's been there way too long and is really old. So, every time he goes in and out of there, he's breaking off more road, breaking off more road, which is changing it. So, I've had some really good meetings with Steve and his consulting, and then working with Patrick and Chris to try to come up with something that isn't going to leave a bunch of bird baths and water in the road or in the parking spots. Um, and I think, with working with everybody, I think we came up with a really good plan. Is it gonna be perfect? It's not gonna be perfect, because the road's not perfect. You know, but we're working through it, and we're hoping, hoping tomorrow or Wednesday, he's gonna start putting that new curb back in there. But it's something that we gotta think about in the future, when we do a development like this, um, whether the developer should have to remove and replace that road. I mean, there's a lot of other things going on, I mean, we got 30, 45 Broad going in, that that's where they were gonna be running through and putting new asphalt down. Probably wouldn't be the best thing, but, I mean, when we run into something like that, I mean, we gotta think about what's best. Maybe it's a cost share with the developer, or they just gotta replace it. Because really, it's not gonna be perfect until we go back in there and rip Grand Street out and rebuild it.
Right.
To get the water we need to do.
Could you contact some other municipalities nearby and see how they handle that?
Well, I know the county, it's cut and dry. If you're gonna do a development, you're gonna redo the road. Whether that's right or wrong, I don't know, but I can see the argument, you know what I mean? I can see that. If you think about it, you walk down there and you look at that road, I mean, there's flat spots, I mean, it's, it's been there a long time. And I haven't had a chance to jump without any other than this, that was a, not actually came from Lloyd jump. I've been more worried about working through the process, getting up, getting the teams together and trying to come up with the best solution. Is there any other question?
Actually, maybe for you and/or Michelle, it looks like the four maple trees at the corners of the bridges and the concrete boxes have died. The, the others are dying. Yeah, I guess it's not a much question.
We've replaced one of them already, and it has now died, so I'm not sure that it's really cut out for, to support the life of the tree.
Maple trees are demanding on Michigan.
So, maybe it's better to not have them than to have them there now.
Dryer trees.
There are other options, please.
How far along are you guys with the saw grain TV man? Cause I see them all over town.
Um, we're through with the sewer. I'm gonna say, after this week, we'll be halfway with the storm. Um, it's been very successful on the sewer, but even at a storm, we found, you know, a few problem areas, we found things that we've been able to get out. Um, they've done a lot of cleaning, so, um, everything's going well.
Do they, are they the ones that clean it? If they run into something, they clear it?
Right. They clean it, they jet it, they back to it, they do everything. Cause we gotta get the camera down, so we can look at everything that's going on.
Are they surprised?
Yeah, we found a lid wedged in off of like a five gallon pail, that was wedged in one of the lines. Uh, we found a line that's 50 feet long filled with concrete.
Okay.
In front of a bait school that we're, we had a meet, I had a meeting today with Greenger and OHM on some other things to do with the schools, and they're gonna look at that. That's right down in front of the aids. So, they're trying to figure out, out of that stretch that comes all the way from Wiley, that came all the way down to Baker Room, filled it in just on the other side of the parking lot to the nearest manhole, it's about 50 feet, so we're gonna try to figure out what was going on there. Possibly should've been tied in at some other point. It's not a huge deal, because it's actually just to drain the pool with, which I only do during the summer, um, but it's something that we're gonna look.
I think they didn't notice last fall.
We did, we just didn't have the camera and figure out what was going on.
That's what I wanna hear.
I said, when you drain the pool now, they just put the, like a fire hose out there and they run it down the hill.
Well, it, it looks like that, but it should be running into the, the storm drain and then going all the way down to Baker Room. Anyway, that's what we're working through, maybe there was something that they had done, that that's what there's, yeah, so we're working through it.
When do you think the wearing course will go on Dan Hoy?
That's a good question. I don't know if anybody's been out there and blocked it, we've had some problem areas before they even started. Um, and they chose to put the base and the other course down, because they still had to haul dirt. So, we still have, I don't know, six or eight spots. Obviously, it's gonna be two weeks, whenever they get that dirt hauled, that dirt's gotta go before they're gonna do it, because they've got a bunch of spots they gotta dig up out there. Um, why they chose to wait, I'm not sure, maybe you could help me with that? I don't know why they would wait until, put the asphalt down to come back and make the repairs, um, but they chose to do that. So, I'm hoping it's gonna be before school. They got a lot of work out there to dig up all them, I don't know if you've seen the paint marks or if anybody's walked in. Yeah, yeah, I know, there's quite a few. Yep. Where the, where the, uh, what do I wanna say? It's wet, and the clay's coming back up with them dried. Was doing it before they put the asphalt, and still doing it now.
Gotcha.
Hopefully before school, hopefully.
I just wondered, they're on schedule for before school, similar to what they're doing?
They are, the whole thing that's holding up now is hauling dirt.
Okay.
I'm hoping that's gonna be done by next Saturday, is I think what they told me today.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other question?
Very good, thank you very much, Dan. Uh, next up is our community development manager, Michelle, how are you?
I'm fine, how's council tonight?
Good, thank you.
Excellent. Well, you got my report in front of you, so before I go into updates, do you have any questions for me?
Did they consider putting a green arrow on there, or the green background, did the arrow instead of the comma?
The Encore sign is a black background with white letters, that's their logo, and the arrow beneath would be a glowing white one.
Can't be just on a white background? Okay. You tried?
I did try, I pushed it as hard as I could.
The size change is good.
But the size is smaller. They were willing to concede that.
It just doesn't look like our type of, I'll give it up now.
That's an trademark, man.
I know, and they want it, yeah, they want the recognition, I got that part.
Anything else? Okay. So, on the 150 Jeffords, we held a three time today on their temporary parking lot and the gravel drive that they'll use for accessing 35 Broad Street, 30, 45 Broad, or that portion there, to do the construction staging. Excuse me. So, now that that's happened, they can actually start to do the work on that temporary lot, I mean, tomorrow. I've informed both Dancers Edge and Encore Theater that this work is going to start. It will not involve, to the best of our knowledge right now, it's not gonna involve any road closures. It may involve a couple of, or some parking spaces on the west side of Jeffords as it comes around before it gets broad, where they put in the gravel drive, but they will give us 24 to 48 hours, they'll either let me know, or Dan know, or a combination thereof, so that we can in, inform Dancers Edge. There's a little bit of a sidewalk to nowhere right there, that will obviously be closed. Um, any, any damage, things like that, they will, they know they'll have to repair, and they have to put up the necessary bonds, et cetera. Northern United submitted an application to change their sign out of the industrial park. So, um, instead of it, that big panel saying Northern United and all that, it will be Jolly Pumpkin, Artisan Ales, um, Kitchen and Tap House. So, it looks pretty nice, all they're doing is taking out panels, they're not redoing the entire sign. I also went out and did an inspection on the parking lot, and I have to follow up with Tony, because you'll recall one of the conditions of approval before they could have finals on UCOM compliance, was, uh, obviously the sanitary sewer discharge, that's all taken care of. But the parking lot has to be repaired and maintained, and, um, based on my inspection Friday, it doesn't look like it's going to be, um, it's not going to be enough, so I'm looking to have a conversation with Tony. And that's the only, that's all I've got right now. I will ask a question of you, have you had a chance to look at the master plan information that was in your packet? And did you have any comments or questions for me on that?
I just had a question.
I'm assuming in Ms. Mason Minock's letter that February and March were supposed to be 2019?
Yes, those are, thank you, I missed that, 2019.
In this one section of the goals and objectives on, on page 18, it said the fourth objective is added under residential to utilize alleys as public roads, grab it the vote for additional housing in the old village. That makes perfectly good sense, but how would we address something like that?
So, it's a goal, right, or it's an, uh, object, objective. We'd need to come back, um, uh, in conjunction with the DVW, with the fire department, and do an evaluation, as well as utilizing our planning consultant and our engineering consultant. And analyze, analyze or evaluate the different alleys, because not, because not every alley is maybe applicable for us. Some alleys, uh, they're still public alleys, but, um, they're no longer utilized at all. And so, lawns have grown up, and there's trees, and nobody ever goes down there. Um, it's, um, we've identified a few, just very cursory, um, in north of Maine, between Alpine and Dover, I think it is. But, you know, there's still work to be done, and it's not something that just because it's in here gets done like it must itself.
Just curious about how you would safely put an address on something?
That would be the start, we've gotta evaluate, see what, how they work.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Michelle on the map?
Yes.
The people landers map that's in here?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure if my eyes are playing tricks on me now, but the Gordon Hall property?
Yes.
In green there?
Yeah.
I don't think there's a property transfer agreement on the Syle portion.
Um, okay, I see what you're saying.
I believe that, that line that divides Western Syle should be the border for that hatch area, if I'm seeing it right.
Okay.
That's on page 29, if I missed.
Yep. Cause that's in the Syle portion, okay, that's nice, thank you.
You can see why.
That's helpful. Did anybody have any other questions or comments on the map?
What does it, what does it say down there on the, uh, school property, I guess?
Um, that it's not, um, open space, it's supposed to be public. And that, that little piece to the right isn't in the 4.5, it's a subdivision.
Okay, good, okay, thank you.
I can make sure that I provide 11 by 17 for you next.
It's okay, as long as it's cleared up, I just couldn't read the handwriting.
Okay.
Do we need to make a decision tonight on this, um, tree replacement letter that's in here, Michelle? Can you give us the background there?
Yes, please, okay, so, you, you may recall back in September, I did a third inspection, reinspection of the trees on the DAPCO site, and we were mostly focusing on the south end, um, that is adjacent to just the old Sloman Kingsley property. The trees have died and have been replaced at least twice. Um, I thought some of them have been replaced three times, um, it may not be that they've been replaced across the board three times, but they've died, there's no irrigation out there, so, um, it did not seem to be logical, in my opinion, when I went out there, to say, okay, you gotta replace them again, only for them to die, because DAPCO's not gonna go out and water them on a regular basis. It's, it's just not gonna happen. Um, and they're not gonna put in irrigation, it's not something that we require, that may be something we wanna look at down the road. Right now, it's not required. So, what I said is, I would check with you all, um, to see how you felt about maybe having a, um, uh, contribution to the tree fund instead of planting those, should've they say 48 trees, I think it was. You were receptive at that time, so DAPCO would like to, I'm sorry, not DAPCO.
DECT.
DECT would like to go forward with that, but they'd like it to be $120 a tree. And that's because, you'll recall that when they were going through their site plan review, they took down a tremendous number of trees, I think it ended up being 600 and some, was it 600 and some trees? It was just an unbelievable number that got taken down, and then that had to be replaced, the replacement of 600 and some. They were allowed to, um, reduce landscaping at certain numbers, but planning commission and council had decided that, um, it was the zoning board of appeals that needed to consider whether the number of trees to be replaced could be reduced farther, and what that, um, there were four things DAPCO was looking for, or DECT was looking for. One was the reduction in the number, and this, one of the others was the amount, instead of 250, could it be 120? And i- in the end, the zoning board did approve that, that was in February of 2014. I was only here three weeks at that time. Amazing how fast time has gone. Um, so that's why they're asking for 120 for these 48 trees. Um, I, I did let the company know, as well as Tommy Earhart, who was their person at the time, um, that, um, I could not guarantee that that reduction would be granted, but that they had the opportunity to at least make the request, and it would be brought to council.
How many trees did they have to plant, starting off, how many, 48 is how many out of the, the?
Um, 48 out of hundreds of trees that they had to plant, as far as their, all of their landscaping, buffering, the screen, the parking lot. There were a lot of trees, but these are mainly along, limited to along that southern property line.
Yeah, it was a forest.
The grass is growing out nicely there, I mean, it's naturalized, it, it's just deciduous trees, evergreen trees, without regular irrigation are naturally surviving. And unfortunately.
Zach? Well, so, would be helpful for this discussion, when it comes back, is to have how many trees they're supposed to, how many trees that got reduced to, and some actual quotes for how much the three inch caliber, two, two and a half that we required, how much those actually cost, because I, I would love to pay less per tree too, but I still think the 250 per tree that we require is below market already. So, it'd be good to have something to actually sink the teeth into.
I'm sorry, say your questions again.
Uh, how many trees zoning ordinance required, what that was reduced to, and then what trees of that caliber are going for? If we went down to one of the nurseries on which they would charge us.
So, I can tell you that the trees that we planted for street trees have to be two and a half, two to three caliber caliber, just like the landscaping that the developer would have to provide, and based on the prices that were given, um, from Superior, they range anywhere from 200 to 300 dollars. Now, those, that did not include evergreens, because we don't plant evergreens for, but the evergreen trees that they planted for the half moon landscaping was 325 to 450, if I remember correctly.
Okay, so we'll bring this back with that information, is that clear, David?
Sure.
And I guess one last question, the letter implies that the trees died within the warranty period, so they could get them replaced at no cost to them, is that correct?
Um, they did the first two time, the first two time, I'm sorry, first time, and I believe the second, the different ones, the second time. The landscaper won't do it again. We're, we're beyond that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I still don't see Lieutenant Kings, so there's a written report from the sheriff department in the packet for the month of June. Any questions from council that we can ship back to, or you can get back to the sheriff's office? Does anybody know the symbol of the numbers on the HIX map?
I think it's when there's multiple at the same place, if it's a two instead of a single, so it just means the two vehicles were there, it doesn't say which one they were.
Just have to guess which type of visitor.
That was my question.
One, how about your?
I don't know, I was missing the buzzer, if that's emergency.
No, that just means that there was two of them. I think one of them was probably the one that's on the report about the damage to the Lily concession stand on Bill Creek's school property. I would say that was one.
Okay, thank you. That's the only question I have.
Traffic stops for the year-to-date are about half of what people are watching.
All the roads have been closed.
Yeah.
It's cause all the roads have been closed.
And meetings are getting out earlier, so staff is able to drive up more responsibility.
How about you, particular staff, not on the cross?
Okay, uh, we'll jump down to city manager report, please.
Uh, we did have the bond sale, and as I told council, the bond came in at an interest rate less than what was projected, which was good. So, we will get the funds on August 28th. Those funds will be invested with our investment company that we just hired. So, we, and we got a projection from the engineer on the expenditure over the course of the project, so that we can invest them. In the meantime, um, that money can be used either towards paying the bond or towards the same thing that the bond is used for, so. Um, that gives us a little bit of extra wiggle room if we need to get into reserves. The 8050 main lease is up in November, so, um, unless council has any other interest in the property, I was gonna talk to Scott about just doing another extension, um, just with a modest cost increase.
Does he have any interest in purchasing it?
Yeah, he talked about it a little bit three years ago, I know he just opened that other place in.
December.
Somewhere, um, so I'm not sure of that, but I, you know, I can ask him about that. I did get a right-of-way permit today through the Metro Act, which regulates telecommunications companies working right-of-way in cities throughout Michigan. From Verizon, so it looks like they're interested in running fiber that would basically go all the way down Main Street, and then down Baker to the industrial park and walk about.
Oh, good.
So, I don't know, they don't really tell you much about whether it'd be in the ground or aerial, and Baker Road is a very, very tight corridor of utilities, so.
Didn't we just sit down burying all the utilities and the roundabout?
Um, they didn't bury a lot, they couldn't hold up, um, they didn't bury much there.
Why don't they come down Dan Hoy, are they coming down Ann Arbor?
Uh, no, they just show a going right down Main Street, down Baker, and then to the industrial park down Dan Hoy.
Is this high-speed internet, or?
Yeah, it's, or it's, yeah, fiber connection, you know, with Verizon, as, instead of Comcast or AT&amp;T.
Is it just, is it better?
Yeah, it should be fast, I mean, any sort of.
Is it gonna be what everyone's clamoring for?
I think so, I don't know that it's vastly different than what Comcast has as fiber, but it's, at least it's another option. Um, so we're gonna send them the utilities, our nice fancy new utility maps that we have, and, uh, so that they're aware of the challenges of Baker right up front. Cause this isn't actually approval for construction, it's just more like a design level. And we don't have a lot of control over them anyway, because of state laws, they don't want to do this. But at least we can make them aware, because Baker has a lot of.
Just want back up to 8050.
Oh, sorry.
Maybe mention something about, check one down and see if they were interested in buying. I know we had a discussion about that before, because it's an historic building, we didn't know whether we would be willing to sell.
Right, and I don't know if he would be willing to buy, so.
So, I guess we'd have to figure out whether we're willing to sell before you go and, uh, ask him if he's interested.
Good point. It would just be a conversation either way. I could just talk to him about the extension and see if he brings up buying.
Sure.
I, like I said, I kinda doubt it with him just opening that on location.
Correct.
Flashing beacons?
Yeah, they, the school submitted a study done by Midwestern Consulting, um, so like I said, sent it to OHM, and they had several concerns about the methodology, so, um, gonna send that back probably tomorrow if they have that.
My understanding is that the interim approval for the RRFDs has been withcended by the manual on uniform traffic control devices, because they're patented device.
Right, but they changed that, now it's back to being allowed, yes, yes, they're having to be allowed.
Okay.
Just a couple, one or two or something.
And before, they just wanted it for the island.
Right, so.
Now they want for them.
Yeah, yeah, they thought, uh, both sides of Dan Hoy, or both, and then, um, Ann Arbor Street and Baker. So, they don't have any funds for those, so the city would, um, need to do those at our expense. So, we just wanna make sure, you know, we've been trying to only put up traffic control that's warranted, founded in.
Uh, where, where on the K River?
At Amberness.
Can I ask a question? Do, do they have the authority to mandate us do it yet?
They can't make us do it, no. They're just drawing, we're suggesting it.
They don't need the warranty anyway, right?
Seemingly, they don't.
I just wanna know, if the line is drawn, we're getting a lot of requests.
Yeah, well, that's why, I mean, when we have somebody request a stop sign, or any sort of signage, you know, we put it through a process to see if.
Yeah, those look for warrant.
Exactly.
Thing is for.
And it doesn't look like from the data that they are.
Well, if they have warranty, then the paint ticket issued in is likely to be thrown out, if you don't have any warranty like.
Well, and it just runs into that putting up signs based on emotion and not based on velocity. Well, the argument would be that they discourage people from crossing these streets, and so they just stop. and so if they just stopped doing that, like they forbid the students from crossing at the island that we put in for the safe rest school project, ironically. So if they stopped permitting kids from doing it, their theory is that more than would do it.
Kids still cross there.
Right, some people, but they don't encourage it, you know, they don't. Pretty much any road, any of the major roads, so Dexter and Arbor, Baker, they don't.
I guess I see a lot more kids at Hudson than anybody in there.
Yeah, they don't encourage any crossing of the major roads from what they put up.
Well, how do you get a cross?
You take the bus.
Parents drive you.
The bus.
Or your, sorry, parents drive you. And they, I don't think there's anything else.
Does anybody have questions for Courtney, are there anything that they've read? Workman's staff?
Forty-two point three percent turnout is.
How many artists did we get registered?
So we have a total of seventy-four that are registered, and we had a total of sixty-five checking.
That's very good. Good work.
It's a lot for the first day, I think, because unusually high for the first day.
Good work. How's it going there, but why don't you do it?
Yeah, ACH had a leader for this for some time, and who was there at the beginning, and there was a little bit of trepidation about, oh, she was going to retire, and she's not going to be there. And I am absolutely amazed at what the group did to take over what she used to do, because she was really hands-on. These guys have distributed the work, they got it all down, it's wonderful, I'm really proud of you, Justin, and the whole group, yep.
I'm sure.
Will Arbor is chair, but Wa is the one who really has been moving and shaking on this one. She just loves it, and she's been going with it. Also Sam.
And then Wa has been, Wa recently.
Yes, she's going to, yes, she'll take over.
Chair, but post player.
Yes.
Thank you for that.
It's so funny, if you attend tomorrow, we have Council meeting tags for the event at Northern United. That's a little extra long because it is all twenty.
What time is that?
Six.
What did you say about that?
She has articles called Harris Committee and Council on her name tag. They're all ready for you? Yeah. Just like a media, an art party.
Then give me a ticket, then if you like your beer.
I'm buying soda.
Okay, any else?
No, I don't think.
I will just give a plug out to the Dexter Days Committee. We did a great job, prayed a good job with the parade. Somebody has to make sure it starts on time.
Well, at least it came to the, what time you starting to get? Soon as it's ten o'clock, buck, they're off.
I think there are only 120 artists waiting through at 10:45.
Last person who went by me at 10:20, so a 20-minute parade, a ton of people, perfect.
I thought the whole weekend was very well done, the weather cooperated, it was perfect. The bands were good, I thought, so kudos to the committee.
Anybody see the fireworks, man, I could hear them.
They were great.
They wasn't really big.
It comes up, the hill, that sound comes up the hill, though. Because I can hear the bands, all, even the lyrics, it just goes right up the hill, so.
Space we built there for.
Amphitheater.
Start of a fun week, so. I don't have much to add to my report, but then if you have any questions for me? All right, now we'll keep this moving, we're over to the consent agenda, where there's one item for the building payroll.
I will reprove the one item listed on the consent agenda, bills that came over the amount of $171,229.97.
Motion by Fisher, second by Smith. Thank you both. All those in favor of approval of building payroll, if I was saying aye, please?
Aye.
Those opposed? Very good, we have no old business to discuss, we're down to new business, item L1, which is consideration of a recommendation from planning commission to approve the combined site plan for 375 Baker. So it's going to be in the final.
Sixty-six?
There's a motion?
Second.
Okay, motion by Fisher, second by Michelle's. Thank you both. To approve, right? Four to five conditions into there, right?
Yeah.
Is there questions? Michelle, you want to run us through what's going on?
So this is the live-work proposal, this has been in various iterations, excuse me, for about the last six, eight months. Live-work units was not a use that was within criticism of zoning ordinance. And at the pre-application meeting, when the pre-app committee looked at it, they were impressed with the organization and the thoroughness of the concept plan, as well as what was being proposed as far as the uses, and made a recommendation or suggestion, if you will, to the planning commission to look at amending the zoning ordinance, to allow the live-work units, look at density as well. Long and short, that's all done, that all became effective July 11th. The applicant came in, excuse me, with a slightly changed plan. It's now three live-work units in three separate buildings. Excuse me. The site fronts onto Baker Road, it has, it abuts a public alley. All access to the site will be through the alley. There's a shared, I'm sorry, there's a shared driveway that Buildings Two and Three would use, and a shared parking area, and there's a primary driveway for Building Number One that has an attached garage. Excuse me. This is zoned to village commercial, and as I've said, live-work units are permitted uses in the village, in the village commercial. The, you have the complete packet as well as the letters that planning commission saw. Not too much else to tell you about this, it meets all of the requirements, there's some minor, some minor issues with the, in the planner's letter, my letter, engineer's letter, as well as the fire department, but they are all minor, and that's why there's a condition of approval. If you've got any questions for me, please let me know.
I'm having trouble finding the four parking spots. I just have three, but I don't see four.
There's not four, there's, did I say four? There are only.
I thought I read in here it was four.
Three buildings, each has a live-work unit. I don't recall four, did I?
Two, three, or four.
This is one?
Two, three, four.
Okay, yeah, I got confused at this.
Oh, the parking spaces.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought you said buildings, not parking spaces.
Yes, there are four shared parking spaces. There's also onsite parking, I'm sorry, on-street parking on Baker Road. But there is no parking allowed on the alley.
Is that, sorry, oh, I just got my hand up there. Is there a time limit for how long until building three has to be built?
The site plan, we have approved, would be, has a two-year window open. If the, if a building permit has been issued.
Then told.
Right, but you have to remember that they're also talking about this in phases, so if building three isn't done within the few years, the applicant knows she'll have to come back and.
Then just a couple of observations. One, I hope when that old barn comes down, that the wood could be reused or recycled somewhere. I know there are lots of places that, I have a carriage house that I think Phil Moore's brother built when he owned our property, and the boards are this wide. So please just don't throw it in the dumpster.
The applicant is.
Yeah. A couple of other observations for future work. And I brought this up at the pre-application meeting, is that it is a little concerning that as you're driving into town on Baker, you're looking at a garage door on one of our main commercial streets. So I'm not sure if that's something we need to take up in the zoning ordinance in the future to adjust that or get some more screening for that. And I do like how close it is to the street, I think it's going to provide a nice edge, make it easier to walk. I would have liked to have seen that back building two have pedestrian access straight to the sidewalk, it looks like it just dumps into the parking lot, and then you have to walk through the alley, so.
Do you want to make that condition?
I would offer that if it's not too burn, so if it's used reasonable to do. Well, I do see where it says future concrete sidewalk. It says future.
Yes, it does, there's a sidewalk.
Where do you see that in the applicant? I'm on page C dash zero-three. Between Building Three and Building One, there's dash lines. Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so the wooden sidewalk.
And so perhaps for the future that that, were more clear, that that, when the back building goes in, that sidewalk would go in. And I am good in comment about, thank you. Mr. Cousins?
I call Michelle, or call each other, and so I have some questions that maybe that she couldn't answer, that maybe the applicant can answer for me. I didn't understand quite the, I understand the workspace concept, but the living space on the second floor confused me with the space on the first floor, okay? So if I could ask a question, when I look at the living space on the second floor, there's only, called a kitchenette, and now I'm assuming what I see is a sink, looks like a sink, and a refrigerator there. There may be other things that were identified there, but in the lower space, there's laundry rooms, there's a much larger kitchen with stove indications there, a double sink, a dishwasher, and all the above. Can you explain how you will live upstairs with only a kitchenette with none of the other things, or do you tend to use the things in the bottom area for your living activities, I guess?
And you're looking at A101?
A101, yes.
So, good question. So the upstairs space will be occupied by our adult child who has a disability, and we don't want him to have access to a stove.
Okay.
So, you know, it's really fitting his needs that we're looking at in the upstairs. In the downstairs area, as part of what I do, there's often, you know, a situation where there may be a lunch as part of conference. Four times a year, we should be trying to do that in that setting, as well as there's other sort of opportunities for the clients that I work with to interact with each other, lunches for the staff living there as well, so.
And how about the laundry facilities there, then? Who are you, who, what will you be using those for?
Yeah, so there's a lot of laundry associated with what I do, there's towels and sheets and linens.
Does the rain guard have an outlet? Or is it just over Land Twelve that?
The rain guard at the west side of the property actually does not have an outlet. The soils in that area were very high in terms of infiltration rates, so it's a pretty small area to train to it. And we demonstrated, in most cases, that we can actually infiltrate, but there's, we, for the, there's a larger system that handles, we'll call it the east half of the development. Even that demonstrated we can fully infiltrate, but we want to provide at least an home flow for that, so we haven't noticed that there's an outlet pipe that goes to catch base with Baker. Thank you.
So, egress to the residential on Building One is only through the interior of the building? Got a stairway up the middle, is there a stairway in the outside of this?
Oh, for to get up to the residential?
Yes. And is there, in Building Number Three, is there a connection between the office and the living areas? Are you just walking along that?
For the future Building Three?
May use Number Two, I'm sorry. The single level one would be.
Okay, that's Building Number Two. Yes, it's a separated space.
So, okay, you're leaving, you got to walk around this, so does that?
That meets the definition of the live-work unit, there's.
Will that allow, will that allow that to be subletted out as a, it will?
They can use it as a separate office from the principal building, or they can, they could rent it out as a, as a different office.
And what did they have planned for Number Three, similar to One?
Similar to One, but they, they most likely wouldn't be using it themselves, they would, may kind of know it at some point and sell that off.
The whole family would be in Number One? Or just the son?
Just the son.
So far, with a motion by Fisher, second by Michelle's, I think your question about the suggested sidewalk is handled, right? Okay? Any further questions from Council, or staff, or the applicant? Is there any other votes? So, we vote to approve with five conditions.
Fisher?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Tell?
Yes.
Eo.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you very much, good luck to you. Do this item L2 is consideration of the recommendation from planning commission to approve the special land use for 7091 next to Ann Arbor Road. By Fisher, second by Michelle's. Thank you both. Okay, so to approve with the five conditions, right? No, wait a minute. Yep. Not 58.
Seventy-four.
Yes, okay.
Two conditions, yeah, okay. Okay, there's no council questions? Ms. Knight?
Yes, could you explain to us exactly what the caretaker orders are?
There will not be caretaker orders, as I followed up with the applicant. The ordinance allows for the possibility that there may be for vet clinics that might have overnight animals all the time. In this particular case, the applicant aren't proposing overnight stays on a regular basis, they'd be, I wouldn't say occasionally, every once in a while kinds of.
Surgical situations?
I'm sorry?
Surgical, co-surgical, pre-surgical, excuse me, so there won't be the need for someone to. So there won't be the need for someone to spend the night or spend nights. They will, if, if and when those situations occur, some staff will come in, check the animals or animal, and we, they will be studying them.
Thank you.
Other questions on material package? Mr. Cousins?
Hi, I'm Michelle again. I remember when the clinic was placed in the space down there behind the.
Extra Village.
Yeah, whatever that was called on there. And there was a lot of concern about the, from the residents in nearby area that there would be a lot of noise from the dogs and so forth. And so there was a lot of people concerned about that and came in and spoke to us about that area there. And I think it was kind of mitigated and that there's going to be no overnight stays there, that was all going to be just daytime activity. So today I ask Michelle, if in fact there is an issue with sound, both to the unit, to the one side or the other, how would that be handled even with the proposal of the sound that they have here now? If it was, if it came an issue, how is it going to be handled? I know they're not going to walk away from it. People could say, well, I just kind of live with it if they approve it this way. So, my question is, is that we approved it in this space, how will you handle future sound issues?
So why don't they have their architect talk with you about how the soundproofing is going to be handled to ensure that there isn't noise?
Right here.
Okay?
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Ferweta. Do you need an address?
Nope, you're good, thank you.
I'm the architect for the proposed vet clinic. So, the ordinance that you have does take that into consideration in this place. So, to meet the ordinance, there's a minimum requirement of handling sound up to sixty-five decibels, which is considered a loud barking dog. The way we handle that is through buildings with materials that have a sound transmission class of fifty and above. So, fifty and a sound transmission class does not technically equal fifty decibels. So it's basically the materials you use. Typically, in a clinic, we're really concerned about it ourselves as far as design and the vets themselves. If a dog is barking, then the dog is unhappy and stressed. Now, that doesn't take into consideration when two, you know, dogs walk in the same room, sometimes they say hello, and they do that with their voices, right, sometimes, and sniffing. So how we're going to handle this is, on either side of us, there's an existing wall. Those walls should be, without verification, at least a six-inch metal stud wall. What we're going to do is really the gap between those two walls, and then we're going to put another metal stud, and we're going to insulate those and put drywall on the inside. That should give us an STC rating above fifty. And then in anything, a standard two-by-four wall with no insulation is so an STC rating around forty. So when we put the two walls together, you stagger the studs so they don't touch, and that, when one touches, a stud touches the other, we can not hear, you can hear it over here. So we're going to keep them separated with a gap of at least five-eighths of an inch. And by doing that, that'll keep the sound from transmitting through. Not to say that somebody's never going to hear the remnant of a bark, but you're not going to hear a loud bark. And I can equate it to, if you go to a doctor's office, sometimes you're in a doctor's office, you're sitting in the exam room, and you can hear somebody next door, if they have no insulation in the walls, they don't take it up to the deck above, you hear, you have three months to live. That's not very good. Once they put a standard wall, they put insulation, you're going to, you can hear somebody talking, but you can't hear what it is. So when we separate the studs, put them together, insulate both of those stud walls, that's what we're going to do. And to do anything, anything more extraordinary, so the actual space is about the size of this room. So we take the length of this room, and the width from the wall to the chairs, that's about how big it is. So, we don't want to do too much, but we would put a small stud there, and that should get our STC rating above fifty, which should take care of this. Sorry if I talk too technical. It's kind of hard not to. Any questions?
I'm satisfied with that. I guess it's refreshing that the other animal clinic we have on Main Street there, we had a major discussion about, about dedication by dogs on the sidewalks there, and thank God we don't have the people coming out worrying about that in this space here. There is a plus side to this whole process, I guess.
Absolutely.
Good question, Paul. Very good explanation, thank you.
Cousins?
Go ahead.
On your floor plan here, I'm giving my eyes, not very good. Where's the back of, what's that say?
It says.
The cages?
Cages, runs, runs.
How long are those?
Three times, three, three by six runs, it says.
And how many runs are there, one, two, three, four, five, six? So you'll never leave more than six animals at a time in there, or is there smaller cages for bunnies and kitties? Technical?
No.
So the only time, hi, I'm Jenna, so.
Hi.
Hi, I'm one of the doctors who hopefully be used like. We don't plan on like having all our cages filled all the time, hopefully eventually when we get the team up, we will. So, yeah, we have the runs, I mean, sometimes we bring our dogs to work and we have them in there, but they're just for the big dogs, if we need more room to put them in there, but it's not like we're going to be leaving dogs there overnight.
So, that would be unusual for a dog to be there more than one day, one night?
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't keep them there overnight, but.
Good, no overnight then?
No, the majority of, like, if we have anything staying overnight, it's mostly going to be, like, if somebody finds a castrated cat that they want vaccinated and made or neutered the following day, and they don't think they can catch it again, we would have to keep it in the clinic overnight, do what we need to do the next day, and then basically release it after it. I mean, we might keep it there for a few days, just so that we don't release it, let the cat into the wild with an incision that's fresh, but basically that, that would be it. Just if we can't catch it again, we need to keep it now to do surgery tomorrow.
And as a veterinary officer, you treat all animals?
Um, no, we don't do large animals.
Not, let's say, ferret?
Yeah, we do exotics. Yeah, we'll do bird.
Rabbit, bird?
Rabbits, birds, guinea pigs, rats, rats.
And what's the neighborhood from across from the runs? I can't make that out either.
Comment key.
Is that, wasn't that inoculate?
Oh, isolation.
Oh, isolation. That's again, if we have, you know, these cats that come in and we don't know where they came from, they could potentially have a respiratory disease, we're not going to put them in a place where we're going to put like our, you know, healthy kittens that, yeah, exactly, that come in for.
And what's the extent of surgery you'll do? Mainly sterilization or seven days?
Yeah, I mean, we do, we do a lot of things, just mass removals, phase neuters, dentals, we do a lot of dentistry. And any, like, if your dog needs a tennis ball and you need to go in and remove it.
Which arm is that version?
Eight to six-ish.
Just curious. I'm not looking for a fight.
About the tennis ball incident.
I don't know how to get care of it. All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Other questions? Does this require any attachment adjustment?
Yeah.
No.
What was there before? Empty?
Empty. Ah, wait a minute, let me go back. Consider this, yeah, we'll have to look at that.
I leave the question to you.
All of the best.
Do we need to add, add our condition?
Yeah, is that on the app?
Yeah, on it, yeah, you can cover it. Okay, so we have a motion by Fisher, second by Smith, to approve the recommendation for special land use with the due conditions listed. Am I okay? Can I call a vote? Ms. Jones, if you would.
Smith?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Tell?
Go.
Knight?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Eo.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle, good work on that. New business item L three is consideration of action on fire station slash city office as was requested by Mr. Cousins.
Well, after the discussion today, I'm not sure that I'm ready unless somebody else is in it, or council is ready to make this decision here, so perhaps we respectfully move this on consideration.
Well, before it gets taken off, when, do we know when we're going to get the information back from the architects about the other two sites?
For the next meeting.
The next meeting, so we can have this on as a more in-depth?
Yeah, do you want it just on the regular agenda? I think I'm probably up to about five or six items by the next meeting. That's pretty common nowadays, so.
Is there not fair to have a work session, half hour?
I haven't seen it, so I couldn't tell.
Before I see it on the agenda, I'd like to see the reports in workshop at least. Could go after the workshop.
Yeah, well, it could be a discussion item on the agenda, not necessarily a reaction. It's up to you then.
As a point of information, I will likely be at the next council meeting, and will be very be.
Oh, yeah. That's right. We got to do that.
Do you want to wait till you come back?
If I get back, yeah.
Can a vote be taken?
Three hours.
Well, then let's, let's have the information that you're getting from there to be part of the agenda as a discussion item for the next.
Yeah, that's.
And then we can, it comes after that.
We always try to accommodate a lot if we need to do it, yes.
Okay, and I'll leave it up to you, other board should be here for that.
Okay, yeah, let me see what he provides.
I'd like to see, I mean, I'll be able to see it before.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, right.
Okay, to move on to number four then? Okay, new business item L four is consideration of the pavement marking bid award to JV Contracting for an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand.
Need to approve a bid from JV Contracting for an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand.
Moved by Michelle's?
Second.
Ms. Jones, I'll let you call that one.
Okay. Sorry, Joe.
Not a crack.
For both years.
So we've used M and M for several years, they weren't able to hold their price, so we put it out for bid, and the low bid was JV Contracting. They had good references, they're M doc certified, like, they did a big product, they've done no buy for like ten years, that's a very big community, and we're happy with them, so. So, yeah, we'd like to get this done September.
I'm surprised M and M couldn't come in. Whatever.
They might have a lot of work.
They're really big names.
Yeah, everybody big, they have a lot of work too, because they're.
Have the bid off the turn.
I think it makes a statement.
The gold sparkles.
Mr. Ruth?
At the end of the first paragraph, there, page ninety-three, says that the cost came in lower than last year because it won't be marking Baker from Dan Hoy to Graham. It's been repaid.
It's part of that contract, marking.
Okay, marking is included.
Thank you. Other questions on this bid? Okay, so motion by Michelle's, second by Tell, to approve the pavement marking bid award to JV Contact and Contracting, excuse me, for an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand. Just call the vote.
Knight?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Tell?
Go.
Michelle's?
Go.
Smith?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Eo.
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. New business item L five is a discussion of the appointment of city assessor. Ms. Jones?
Yep, so Chris's last day was August eighth. We met with WCS something on August seventh. They provided a proposal today, but the cost was pretty high, so we pay Chris about thirty thousand dollars a year right now, and the first year was forty-seven, the second it was like forty-eight, and then the third was like fifty thousand.
Was it real, sir?
So, I don't know, I just, that wasn't something I was ready to recommend, make a recommendation on today, I got it at like three o'clock, so I needed to think about, I mean, you can.
So, the three, can you give it to me? It's forty-seven, something, and then fifty?
It was like forty-seven, forty-eight, fifty, and then five, fifty thousand.
What is that, a week?
Forty-eight thousand, five hundred. It's eight hours in the office, I mean, they do do all their work besides when they're in the office, but eight hours of like face time saves Chris. So, we just need to think about that one a little bit.
So do we put this up for a bid?
Yeah, nobody bid because it's very difficult to find, right. It's very, very, very difficult to find assessors.
There's your one takeaway from the meeting, grow up to be an assessor.
Exactly. It's very difficult. So WC is really the main firm that provides assessors contractually.
That's kind of a tough word to throw around.
Which is why we went to them, so, you know, only, so, you know, Marie has taken classes, she's technically a level two assessor. You know, I don't know if it's worth trying to find a person that we could train up into the position with her, you know, and they kind of do, I don't know, because I mean, it just seems like for that amount of money, I mean, we're going to hire our new person for the assistant planner at forty thousand, I mean, we could probably have a person, you know, that's here forty hours a week for that kind of money, so we just need to figure it out.
So Marie would then serve as a guide?
Maybe in an interim period, you know, until the person kind of got up, and I don't know, like I said, you know, we have, we just need to think about what's best for the city and.
Did anyone ask Marie?
Forty, oh, no.
I've talked to Courtney about it, because. No, originally I was doing it as a backup, but the, the need, I mean, it's a seller's market out there.
Yeah.
There just aren't enough assessors, and if we can't get anybody in here that's economical, I mean, there's got to be some sort of way we can grow it. So, yeah, no, I, I.
I look forward to your recommendation at the next meeting.
And she's taking classes to be a level three, as your training.
Yes, I started level three. I've taken one class for level three, I have two more, actually scheduled the way it works, the way the budgeting worked, I have two more scheduled, but I could be a level three probably within eight months, seven months?
Wow.
If I just took all the classes, you know.
Right. What was Chris?
He's a level three.
Yeah, four would be bigger than what we need, you know, four.
Four would be like your county equalization.
Yeah, or industrial, big industrial facilities.
At one point, there were seven assessing openings in Washmack County.
Just in Washmack County. It's a problem.
Go, go, go. Yeah, there's an opportunity, some.
Somebody.
I, everybody that I talk to, I encourage, I have two friends.
I'm encouraging my son.
Right, two friends that are looking at it right now.
Chris was given up for eight hours plus homework.
Well, I mean, he, I mean, this is anecdotal, but he told me his wife had two communities and was making six figures.
Well, I believe it.
For like, you know, twenty hours a week.
He's a good assessor.
Right, I mean, everybody, right, everyone just has to have one, so it's, so, anyway.
Well, we could pray that Chris will just, all of a sudden make the decision to come back.
I think that's happening, I guess.
Pretty good exam now the first time.
He's paying just as much, and he doesn't have to have eight hours of office hours, and he doesn't have to drive an hour and a half every day.
Right.
He's still going to Expaton City.
Okay, well, we look forward to your, a good thought on that, a good cumulative thoughts on that, so. Actually, okay, okay, to move on, L six, everybody done with an update there? Okay, L six, consideration of the appointment of PSLZ LLC as a city auditor, or is that posted seventeen eighteen, or is that?
Yes, it's for last year. They need to audit last year.
Second.
Moved by Fisher.
That's to take the treasurer's recommendation.
Is there a reason why, I guess, we're not going beyond one year?
Because I kind of dropped the ball on that, and they give them enough time to get a book up done, so I just asked for one year.
Okay, and they're holding the price, so I got you, okay, fair enough.
Yeah, we'll ask them for more next year.
Okay.
Oh, you're on the year then. No problem.
Other questions, everybody's okay? Rena is good. Okay, please call the vote, Ms. Jones?
Cousins?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Tell?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. New business item L seven, consideration of resolution authorizing compensation for Joint Board of Appeals.
I'll move that resolution as shown on page one eighty.
Okay, motion by Zach, second by Knight. Thank you both.
We talked about this, and then Zach and I was like before on it.
We talked about this, um, and then Zach and I was like before on it, and thought that just to kind of get it so it's consistent with everything we're doing now, we would pass it where it's not including the ex officios, since that's how it is for planning in parts, and then have a larger discussion about changing the multiple ordinances, and we would need a new resolution anyway to, um, pay ex officios at the direction council wants to go, but at least this handles, um, paying the members that aren't ex officios off EDA.
And how many are there?
Three.
Three at any one meeting.
That's a minimum?
Unless, unless the ex officios are the ones not there, and then they're.
Then the alternates will set them then.
Right.
Typically, three at one.
Right, anywhere from three to potentially five.
Three's more of a.
Yeah.
What's, what's the average of the number of meetings they have a year?
They haven't had one in a while, probably just three or four.
They've had three meetings this year.
It's our tightened-up ordinances.
It's really streamlined.
Our RC will be so proud.
Our RC is so proud of us, nobody's caught up in the EDA anymore.
So it's definitely not monthly, I mean, they haven't been since, what, June?
No, they haven't been, no, before, I don't believe it.
Might be big.
Yeah, it's been a while.
No, it's a good thing, though, that that order isn't supposed to be there every month.
You're right.
Right.
I was joking, but it's kind of, you know, that's one is the norm.
I will tell you, when I sent out the cancellation notice for this month's meeting, Zach was kind enough to share with me his EDA agenda. I just gotta say, I'm sure glad that I'm here.
How many things did you have on?
There's going to be seven.
Are they all lit, right?
You're selling popcorn at that.
Yeah. We're gonna have to figure it out how to reprogram the lights so they don't shut off at midnight.
Start at noon.
I love it. Okay, um, I forgot to do this last time with the previous one, do we need to have the dollar amount in the, in the opposition, or we just?
No, it's in the resolution.
Okay, so good enough, okay. Yeah, okay, so resolution on page one oh eight, we're good to go. Any other questions? Please call the vote to approve the resolution.
Knight?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Tell?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. New business item L8, consideration of support to apply for a Michigan Council of Arts and Culture Fair's grant for the plane, Dexter Plane Air Festival, paid Dexter Plane. For support. Motion by Fisher, second by Cousins, you both.
So this is a grant we've applied for in the past, um, it's been quite a few years, though, since we got it. I think we got it for the first or second year of player, so it's been three or four years. We did submit it by the date of August third, and then they say that council can, um, bless it sort of after that if necessary, so we just wanted to have council say that they approve it, it would take a fifty percent match, but that's not an issue because we spend, you know, well in excess of that on player. Or we make it well in excess of that on plan. And it would go towards things like the judges fee, the corporate, um, the judges fee, the musical entertainment, the tent. The tent's actually one of the most expensive pieces of plan here, honestly, so.
What is the background? Oh, we've.
The big tent? Yeah, for the festival.
No, no, what's the cost of it?
Oh, what do you run it for? I'm like, I know, we run it for. Weird question. And what I thought it was fairly obvious.
Hundred dollars a day?
It's like.
Twelve hundred.
Yeah, like five hundred dollars for the week, and we do have a bit of a reduction because it stays up from the fire.
Right, so they don't have to break it down and reset it up.
Right, and so we share that savings with them, um.
That's nice of us.
That's interesting. They make more money a week.
Ten bucks, ten bucks a quarter.
I like that we're a nice community.
Is that a recommendation to add social tent to plan there?
We do have electric license for it, so we're good to go.
Well, I find it encouraging that it's self-efficient enough to provide its own air.
And good job for pursuing the grant.
Yeah, well, Justin got that one in there, it's a busy time of year, so August third was a tough day, and so. We did not know about the elections when we planned the date of plan air. Five years ago, six years ago.
Okay, to call the vote?
Tell?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. We just have two more on the business items, the next one is a discussion item for the Central Street project stated for two thousand and nineteen.
Yeah, so this is an exciting one, we're trying to get really ahead of the game here on this right now. And we would like to have a resident meeting, um, in the design phase. So when we done thought about projects in the past, we've sent out letters in the design phase, we've never actually done a public meeting in the design phase, but just trying to make sure we're doing a good job of educating everybody. So what I wanted to do was provide an update, which OHM provided the memo, and then I provided the resident letter that will hopefully go out tomorrow or Wednesday, and then, um, inviting everyone to a meeting on September fifth, or asking for their feedback by September seventh. It'll give people a chance to ask any questions they have, and see where their residents will include this map as an eleven by seventeen. Uh, it'll also go to the residents on Fourth and Fifth that are impacted by the stormwater work. Uh, I think the only things we wanted to just get some feedback on before we finalized the map were, um, one is that crosswalk. So if you look down close to Monument Park, there's a crosswalk down there, and we just wanted to confirm that council wanted us to leave that in. It will require some tree removals in that area for site distance, and so what we would do is just bubble that on the plan as sort of like a known area of tree removal. If council wants us to keep that, um, it's kind of a stilly one, but.
If we don't keep it, we keep the trees?
Uh, probably, right. The trees.
If we don't, if we don't keep the crosswalk, we keep the trees?
Yeah, because it, the, the main issue is coming around the curb, although there are some, some parking spaces there, but that's a little more obvious. Just the way it is right now, the trees are actually fairly young, so it's one of those things that over time, as they grow up, they'll be true, and they'll be much more visible. But right now, those canopies are kind of low, so.
We got to plant more trees, we have a lot of them. The other issue was the forest pavers, and we had some, and we originally scoped the project five years ago.
It does not.
A very long time ago. We talked about potentially, um, including forest pavers in the parking areas. Not really something we're looking to do now, um, we kind of talked about it in the maintenance concern, it's an additional expense, and we did add some expense to the project by including Forest Street and trying to make sure we're solving all the drainage issues, so, um, we're leaning away towards, away from the forest pavers, um, at this point, and doesn't really help us as far as saving a ton of stormwater management, I guess, is what we found, right?
My question then would be, that's gonna make the street seem a lot wider from curb to curb, which naturally means people drive faster. Are there any treatments we can have to not make it feel an extra twenty-five feet wide? So a couple of things that are intentional in the design, um, the bump-ins at each one of the intersections are definitely in terms of try to do that. Now, with our bike lanes, we're still twenty-two foot wide of pavement, plus five thirty-three side, we're still thirty-two foot before we get to the gutters. Beginning of gutters, so it'll still have a little bit of a, probably feel a little more open than it is now, actually. There are, um, there are some more, I'll call them, uh, intentional types of traffic calming that can be done. You know, but those can vary in all sorts of ways, I mean, some other things, if there's a known speeding problem, um, some communities look at speed tables, um, there's, um, chicanes, all sorts of these more, again, deliberate, intentional things, try to slow down the speeds. Where it becomes a little more challenging is, um, we are tied to M.D.O.T. funding on this, um, as part of this project, so, um, any of those types of things we do, um, we just have to make sure that those are in alignment with the design guidance, that the, the program we follow. So I, I, I actually just did a project last year where we did, um, we did bump-ins, we did medians in certain areas, and we actually did a small roundabout. Because we had, in that case, we had, it was a twenty-five mile an hour area, it was driving thirty-eight miles an hour, so we had known speed. Uh, we actually just, I think, got some traffic cops done, um, so we'll look at the speeds and see if we find, um, but beyond the bump-ins, I don't think we have anything. When I was, I was gonna ask about the compact roundabouts. Because I, I live just down the road on Dover, and in the rare times that I'm outside doing yard work, or the past three years, I've witnessed three crashes there, and.
At Dover and what?
Dover and Fifth. Which I, I don't want to be the sentimental, it's, it's an awful sound, but I, I guess my question would be, or challenge would be, if there might be application for those. For those who aren't familiar, the compact urban roundabouts, you put a little circle in the road with a raised curb so that everyone has to slow down, even if you're going through, so that you slow and you pay attention. So it's, it's a much different application than what's out there, but it, it functions as a traffic calming that you have to pay attention to.
We have one similar to that in our farms. Not the mini ones coming in on Brian, and then metal, but at Wilson Corners, one definitely.
Brian has some loans.
Mr. Fraz, when you do that.
Mr. Cousins?
So I, I, I can't read everything here, it doesn't really define, there is curb and gutter all the way from Third Street curb to where we are. And the off-street parking will then be paved off-street park?
Yes, yep. So you'll have the bike lanes, and then you'll have the parking lanes next.
Similar to the block of Central across from the building.
Yeah.
It's just hardly defined here, because a lot of people do use that piece for parking.
You have parking on both sides, um, now, from Fifth towards Monument Park, you'll notice on the inside of the curb, we don't have parking. Um, and part of that is a little bit, we get a little pinch there as we go around the corner.
Yeah.
And we just got some driveways there, so rather than trying to bring those in and take them back out again, uh, we just omitted the, the parking on that side. You think so?
That's commercial off the right there.
We could probably add it in, it would just be a matter of, um, we'd probably stay a little shy of the curb.
The customer's front of, in the middle house.
Okay.
I'll have to go get and look at the.
Parking on the side?
Pardon? Yeah, there's, are kind of ones that are in purely big parking lot.
Well, keep in mind, this is a concept that we expect to receive feedback on from the residents, so all of these comments that are from council are just as valid as can be incorporated into the form, so. See what you get, that doesn't mean you have to necessarily change the drawing before you go out with it. Okay, that would be my take, I mean, but the comments coming from here can, you know, flow too.
Are there, do the bike lanes end as it enters that, into the, after the curb there, the bike lanes end there?
Yep, pretty much is those parking spaces, you have that final crossing, um, we taper the bike lanes in, and then we just.
There's not space for bike lanes there, or?
We probably could, the, the concern there is, um, just behind the parking lane, look a little closer at it and see if we can do something there.
And then all of a sudden, they stop, I guess it's.
Yeah, that's kind of the same thing that happens at Dexter and Arbor, where it stops, and it's shared, where the parking is.
Such a short little space there, though.
Yeah.
Could get all the way into the main time. And I guess, is there any consideration for angle parking, so there's gradient parking after all of that? At that space? Yeah, Monument Park all the way across there.
Didn't always bring that up, um, generally, M.D.O.T. prefers that we do the, the parallel parking, um.
The limits of the project are.
Oh, I mean.
No, you're going further.
He's outside the limits with his question.
Right.
He's outside the limits there, okay.
Sure.
We don't have, we have perpendicular parking, not parallel.
Yeah, that, yeah. A little slower to react, but yeah, that is a little beyond the limits of this one.
Yeah, I know. You can change over the next question.
Right.
It could be restricted.
Yeah, that would give you a little more space.
May I pick up one parking space?
I've got a curb radius question. Uh, comparing on Fifth Street, those curves on, uh, those curves on Central versus the one on Broad, they seem very, very open. Is this what M.D.O.T.'s telling us we have to do? Um, we generally are, are putting trucks around the radii to see, um, it's not quite as large, so if you look at the one at Third and Central, uh, that's extremely large radius there, and that's because that's a route, um, so we intentionally open that up and see that design. These are a little more traditional, we could look to see if, you know, a lot of urban places, they push them all the way down to fifteen foot. The only issue there is that if you have trucks, they generally have to overturn a lot of times in the area.
I think to your point, uh, Mr. Charles, that'll help overall with kind of that, that narrowing effect?
Well, I'm thinking too with the, the two bike lanes there, that the overturning won't be as dramatic if it were tight up. What radiuses are they now? You know, I don't know, I'm, I'm thinking those are about thirteen. Those are pretty broad. Well, they're pretty central.
My, my comment would be on the letter. I wouldn't promise that the traffic will be at a June unless you're absolutely sure it's going to be open in January at this point. I'd give them a start in construction and look at the elements that you're generally trying to be done before. What, Dexter Day Center? I, I, keep it general at this point, unless you're, unless you're absolutely sure, I mean, I know you can write it into the progress logs or whatever, but. Acceleration? Then I, I thought we.
Well, or, or say that, yeah, it does say just maybe it's a schedule, but I don't know that, I would, what I would say is start a construction, just say a couple of months.
Okay.
Anticipate duration, duration two to three months or something, so you know, I mean, if, if you're rained out in April, you're gonna.
Right. Yeah?
Could you talk about a little bit about the stormwater issues? To me, resolving these stormwaters on Fourth and Fifth is really, really difficult, so.
So if we can kind of go back, um, two thousand and eleven, that timeframe, um, the city did a number of, uh, a pretty significant water main replacement project. Went down Forest Hill, and a lot of them come to the side streets, Dover, you can imagine that, it's a. And so what, what was done as part of that is, is we did new water main, uh, but in that process, we also did some ditch work, we did some new storm sewer, catch spaces, things like that. And so we did some work to kind of channelize and concentrate the flows into certain areas, and so if you were to go down Forest Street, heading down the left side, there's kind of a small valley before it goes up to Central Street, and so there's a series of, uh, what we call leaking basins, which basically are the normal catch basin, but it has holes around the outside, so the water actually perks into the soil, um, and then we had an overflow pipe that went over to Central Street. And so that design, um, is more or less for larger rain events, you get standing water that eventually drains down. So what this design is, is looking to do is, well, let's pick up that, that, uh, that issue that was, um, you know, kind of, uh, channel, was to channelize to that, that bottom of the hill in two thousand and twelve. Convey it downstream, so what this design includes is a run of storm sewer to that low point, um, you can kind of see it on the figure on Forest Street. And I think we may have to, I'm just looking at my picture, I'm not sure how everyone's around the table is, but I think we may make our storm sewer a little more bold, so it stands out a little better on this print. our storm sewer a little more bold, so it stands out a little better on this print. But I think we will, we're going to try to run a storm sewer down to that location to pick up that low area, so we can actually bring it into the storm sewer system, and then across the street from that, that low point we talked about, there's been a kind of a driveway that is pretty flat, there's been a significant overlay over time, it's built up to pavement, and so in some rain events, you actually have water that spills over the, beyond the curb, through a driveway, down the alley. So what this project's trying to do, and we'll talk about this in a little bit, related to the cost, we're just trying to kind of pick up some of those drainage areas that aren't really being dealt with right now, and bring them into this new storm sewer system on Central Street, and if this would actually discharge greatly on the river through a stormwater, we have a treatment in this particular range. So there's, we're working with Watts and M.DOT to get that particular part of the project included in the description, just make sure it can happen, and that does have pretty specific rules about the limits of your projects. But that would, that would really, in our mind, take care of that drainage issue, we would put a catch basin at that driveway that's problematic, and we also tie into the existing leaching basin, provide the actual outlet to that. So, all told, that cost is somewhere, if you look at just the pipes, somewhere in the $30,000 range, a little bit of the pavement replacement, and it's, well, there's going to be a lot of storm pipe on this project, so it'd be probably a good time to do that, because this is something that council wants to receive.
Sorry. So, the, I see three apartment locations proposed storm sewers, one, I think you were talking about, another one there on Fourth Street, and then one up here on Fifth Street, is that correct? Those all will tie together then for that process there, that you're taking them down Central then?
So actually, the Fifth Street sewer, there's a high point, roughly somewhere around Fourth Street, where you have, you know, call it the high point at Fourth Street, everything goes to the River, then you head back towards town, and there's, it starts going back towards town via grade. The way that goes right now, if you go over there, there's culverts and some swales, and it's not a very defined drainage course down Fifth Street. What this is proposing to do is, we would actually do an underground storm sewer from Central Street all the way to Broad, we would tie into some sewer that was done there probably, probably over 10 years ago, and so that would provide us an actual underground connection, underground storm sewer system. When we do that work, we would be impacting the earth and the area, so we would kind of do some swales to make sure that the roadside drainage kind of the catch bases, so that's one of the recommendations that we had, you know, I think, in talking with Dan and Kurt, we understand there's some problems in that area now anyway, we'll need an outlet to this spot, so it kind of gives a solution for Central Street, but also dealt with the Alpine Street.
So the Fifth Street drainage would go all the way down to the end of Alpine, and go right behind the library?
Yep.
Dark lane is, oh, there on the, at the dark lane, I see you're supposed to...
Yeah, so that's actually just sort of some pavement removal there, the heavy wax...
Looking at this green line?
Yes, the green line, yeah.
Green line, green...
Yeah, yeah.
And there's a lot of maintenance costs that we endure with the Fifth Street stuff now, in the way it's shown, we don't have as much on Fourth Street, but on Fifth Street, we've got a lot of maintenance and D W that we would try to keep off with the drainage not being in.
Break back those stones.
Right, stones, ditches, so there's a savings there.
Does that recognize that we are on hill, the water runs downhill, and it has a tendency to carry stuff with it when it goes downhill? We can solve these problems, drainage problems, it'll be beneficial to everybody, so, give it down while we're doing it.
Do you think there'd be an opportunity to incorporate rain gardens as part of this? I know An Arbor's worked that on Miller, and the road commission and water commissioner's doing a platter somewhere the other side. Do you see an opportunity to do that somewhere here?
So, I get in trouble for talking to Courtney about how great your soils are here in Dexter, they're fantastic for infiltration.
He loves our soils, those are where...
So, yeah, what we say in soils, very good at infiltrating stormwater, and I think there are a lot of opportunities here for this, you know, especially in bump out areas where we've had hurt. What I would, if something that you guys are interested in proposing, I would certainly make it part of the public meeting to see who's interested in it. What's generally found is that cities try to do rain garden projects, and, you know, I think, we did one in Pinkney about 10 years ago, and you can go up there, you know, it doesn't look all that great.
Where's it at?
I think it's on Mill Street in Pinkney. You'll see there's actually forest pavers, and then behind that, there's rain gardens. And I'm not sure, I've not specifically been over there, but I just know that's one of the properties we did. Rain gardens are more out, call it the, they're not maintained to level that the city maintains, for instance, parks, you know, or that too. So if there's people that are interested in it, and they happen to be at low points where it makes sense, they can be a great solution. We're going to design a storm sewer system to work regardless of whether they, we have the infiltration, but, you know, if it's of interest to people, you know, certainly the public needs a great time to bring it up, and, you know, I think it'd be a great solution for this corridor, if you wanted to do it, it would probably be just as effective as if you were to do the forest pavers. And the bigger question, I think, to everybody is the, just the latency cost, and also just the perception of it, you know, I think, go ahead.
Is it the look you want?
Right, right. We talked about that in An Arbor Street, we did that a couple years ago, and it was, you know, people liked the look of An Arbor Street with the, you know, the manicured lawns, and that was something that was, you know, they didn't want the city to now to use in that.
And that was before Mill Creek, right? When we put the rain gardens in there?
It was, we were doing that 2013, so things were coming online right around that time.
I'd certainly love to have that as part of the public meeting, because if the people there support it, it'd be good to get it in, but if no one wants it, that's something you can't push.
Where would you put them?
At low spots before it gets into, and that's the challenge, is that there are spots where it works better, and if the people who live in the house don't want it at all, then...
Right, like Dan's, Kurt's house, it's gonna go way down like this, and they're really slow sounding, where that junkyard used to be.
You could...
That was 30 years ago.
I think one good spot, you could tuck it on kind of the north side of the Central and Fifth intersection, because we have flow going downhill, we can kind of create space right after we do the bump out, just come in there, so...
Zach, do you see those as something the homeowner would do, or the city would maintain?
Well, it's likely something that we would maintain unless we've got homeowners who are really excited, are retired, and have extra time. Or Boy Scouts, although that's not an exciting eagle.
But it must vary in rare swine.
You have one of your guys.
Right, yeah.
I think this is good communication. I think it's good, I think you're right, I'd bolt the green lines there a little more.
Yep.
Maybe put a arrow that says two outlet, or something, or connection, whatever.
Yep.
Action resistant.
So, I can kind of recap a couple things, so we're going to keep the crosswalk in. Is everyone okay with taking the forest pavers out? I think that's a good decision.
Too much maintenance on the future, it's gonna look pretty a couple of years, and then...
Yeah. And what about additional traffic calming? Is that something we'd like to create some exploration graphics for our public meeting?
Didn't I see a picture of easy streets from An Arbor?
Yeah, that's kind of actually, on the scale, I think, we're just kind of thinking here.
Was that one fourth?
Yep.
Well, I mean, you can, you can create more bump outs...
Yeah.
By bringing the curb around, by bringing the driveways out further.
Yep.
But that is different than what we did on the first block of Central between Third and Second. So, I mean, there is a way to do it, I guess the question I would ask, maybe we get some input from our sheriff's office, is do we have a speeding valve coming in on, coming in now that we're concerned about either complicating or accelerating, or, I agree, new roads bring a little bit more speed from time to time, but...
Does the traffic count, we does that have speed?
You know, it probably doesn't, it just has...
I'm trying to remember from the road commission founders, I thought they did somehow, but...
They might.
I would be...
I'm just saying, I don't know if that's a problem.
Right, so I'm...
I'd be interested in seeing, design a poster, people put their little sticker on it.
Okay. We've not necessarily talked about our format, but if we have some things like that, I think that's something we'd like to at least gain input, you know, in the...
However, the people, Central's the main street for us, and so I think the input has to come from beyond the people who live there, who put a sticker up, because there's a lot of people that use that, travel through there, so I'd like to figure a way to get a broader section in terms of input.
Well, they're going to want it faster.
A little trucker out.
Yes. Mr. Smith?
I was just wondering, I see that the approaches for the highways are labeled as concrete. Is there a reason besides, you know, you've got the curves that go concrete versus pavement?
So what we, what we found on An Arbor Street in 2014 is, it was actually, in that particular bid, it was, on average, 10% cheaper to actually put in concrete, the way our prices came in, so we made the decision to switch everything in concrete. You know, it's a function of asphalt prices coming up a little bit, not that the concrete has it too, but in that particular bid, it was just advantageous, supposed to make that switch. And I think, generally, it works well in the construction phase, if you get the curves in, and then they can just do the concrete portion, you don't have to drag asphalt truck down there, happing back. With this having all concrete curb and gutter, I think that's just our recommendation, just go concrete. Do you have enough questions? I did have one other question. The memo talks at one point about, this is a little bit larger, we can't learn, apologize for you guys, doing this to you guys at the end of the meeting, but we talked about using Central Street corridor as a potential area where we could try to include some stormwater detention, really to try to assist redevelopment down the line. We're really kind of just looking at, call it the Fifth Street and Monument Park area, for that type of area. We obviously have some developments on the, not on the books, but we, you know, heard that they're coming. And so that has effects on development, as you try to lay out buildings, parking spaces. So, just a thought that we had in our kickoff meeting was, would there be benefits to essentially oversize the stormwater infrastructure on Fifth Street to basically help to offset detention requirements? You know, the only real example I can give you is kind of what we did at Industrial Park years ago, we put the largest detention basin in, and that just allows developers to come in and build, they don't have to, you know, carry the burden of putting underground detention or detention pond on the property. So, this is part of the discussion I had for council, actually, Michelle kind of brought up in our, in our discussion, just the understanding hardship that some developers claim as they come in, so...
Well, in trying to maximize demo space, that's available for the development.
Well, we could certainly sell that product.
Not necessarily for the public meeting, but, and we still have to look at cost a little bit on that, but it's just kind of something we thought we should look at while we were there.
Planning, concrete.
We can come back with more details on that, so we'll see, see if it's even feasible in the size.
Where would it, what would, what properties would it affect, Little Caesars, or what is it?
The ISD, I would assume, potentially.
And then all the way down to us, down Fifth?
No, not through Fifth.
Not to Mary Kendall's, I mean, before.
Yeah. Then there would be some cost that would be charged back to the developer using it in the future, you know, so we would theoretically in the future.
Any commodity we put in now is going to give us more return later. This is, I know this is not our, when are we doing Third Street truck round?
Third and Broad will be together when we get, so we'll be federal funding eligible again in about four or five years, and that's when Third and Broad will be done. That's our next federal aid project, so Central's federal aid, so that puts us up in the cycle probably 2023-ish, I would hope, for another $350,000.
I mean, as a trucker, and as the main traffic round in the county, it's awfully worn.
Right, that's why we had it added to our federal aid at work, so we could do that.
Well, all right, four years is, four years?
A year before we...
It'll be done fully.
Yes.
It'll be done when it's done.
Okay. So, on track? Yep. So that meeting will be, I think, September 10th, right?
Right, yeah, so that's why we wanted to get the letters out this week, and try to get people to put it on their calendar.
So, I understand that the talk about the water retention between Monument Park and Fifth is kind of like a city thing?
Yeah.
Not the public meeting.
Put on a letter.
Right, because we have to figure out if it's even, you know, if it adds, you know, $100,000 to the project, that's probably not going to be...
You gotta make sure there's even room to do it.
Right.
We have a lot of right of way, but, yes, we like to fight separation, so...
I'll never know, unless you stake it out, so...
Billy, you can bring up your extensive, of Baker Road to Central Street at that time.
Yeah, please, for the help with me.
Sure will look pretty, though.
Okay. We added item 10, which was consideration to proceed as directed in closed session regarding pending litigation, I believe. So, Mr. Smith?
Second.
Second by Michelle. Any discussion necessary? Okay. Just that. Please follow that vote, please.
Fisher?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Tell?
Yes.
Motion carries, we are on to council comments, starting with Mr. Michelle, if you are ready, sir.
I've got nothing.
Okay. Ms. Knight?
I've got one, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Smith?
I have a mystery about this. I found out some very interesting information, we had an item at the museum that was actually of Dexter Maine, not Dexter, Michigan, so we sent that back to them, and they sent us a little form you fill out, and a note saying Dexter Maine was founded by Samuel Dexter, Judge Dexter's father, in 1816. So we've sent them back a note saying, that's very interesting, our Dexter is named for that gentleman, and so we're kind of communicating, and we're wondering if there's other parts of the Dexter family that might be, you know, founding of towns, but I do know of two towns, one in, yeah, one in Kansas, and one in Iowa, that were named Dexter because of the name of a horse, so...
I don't know, will it be?
Yes.
Mr. Dexter, Missouri, and Mr. Dexter...
Yeah, I have a feeling that as we go farther west, that they probably won't be, but there are some of these, so we'll give you some information on that later, and we'll find more.
Thank you.
I can follow that.
Mr. Nelson?
I just want to thank that Boy Scout, I never had a Boy Scout sit at a home meeting before.
Mr. Cousins? I would just like that we have some clarification on the closed session, in the process of attendees, and the process briefs, and as I announced before, that I will be not here at the next meeting. Thank you for not considering anything that I wouldn't. Fair enough. We are on to non-arranged participation, if anyone in the audience would like to speak this evening, last opportunity.
Last opportunity. Okay, we'll see if the motion for adjournment, so move. Mr. Smith?
Thank you.